...ability study, both financial and practical. As far as hotel, additional hotels go, if they're, you know, if, if the study indicates there would be a demand, I would think the market would respond to that demand. We're, we have a lot, we have a number of hotel interests out there now for additional hotels, but it's not related to that project.
Okay, so are we planning possibly on a feasibility study? Or is that only if you guys?
It's being, it's, I think it's something being considered, but there hasn't been a determination of that.
Okay. Um, okay. As far as the appointments go, do we have any idea on where that sits? Because usually, I think someone asked months ago, and it's usually done May 1st. We're into June.
There is going to be discussion in closed session at the committee of the hall next Tuesday on appointments.
Next Tuesday? Okay. So is it possible the next village board meeting will have all those?
That's my objective.
Okay. Um, yeah, to go back to the, to the sports complex, I just, please do the feasibility, if that's something that we move forward to do, please do this feasibility study. We already owe 4.2 million on the convention center. We probably owe two and a half already on the train station. I mean, we just can't keep taking out all this debt. Plus, we have the TIFs. So it's just, we just, where the money's going to come from? I don't know if we can get, if you guys have talked to any private investors or there's...
There will be other, that whole concept will be explored very closely. We're, I think you've traditionally had a very conservative, fiscally conservative board. I don't see us getting less conservative on this particular subject. I think we'll look at it very closely.
Mr. Glotz, may I ask you a question?
Yes.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Would you consider, or would you, would, do you think that if this board were to continue with the feasibility study, would you be okay with it being expenditures of upwards of $75,000?
It's not my call, it's just, I'm just...
Well, I'm just asking a question. I mean, what do you, what would you personally think?
I'm not on the board, so I'll leave that, that's your decisions, and to just have to accept it. I mean...
So you, the feasibility study, you would agree needs to be done, correct?
Only if you're going to do homes, obviously no. If you're going to do a sports complex, I think it's the most important thing to do. That would probably be more of a, someone that is involved more, like, probably like a Steve Tilton or a Dave Niemeyer would have more knowledge of that than any of us would. But I would think, don't you think that would be the right thing to do? If you're, if that's the direction you think we should go, you should do something like that, or no? I don't know.
I think it's the only thing to do. If we're going to consider it, yeah, I think we'd definitely do it. But I just wanted to throw it out there. It's not going to be free.
Nothing is.
All right.
Now, what do you, do you have any...
Yeah, I mean, I, we've, I've told, but we, we, if we're going to consider this, we definitely need to do a feasibility study to compare what another town may be doing is good information, but there's, we have a unique situation. It would be crazy to spend that type of money on a facility like this without doing a feasibility study.
Thanks, Dave. Do we have any idea about the, are you able to speak the status of the hearing today to dismiss the Buckeye case? Are we allowed to talk about that today, or no? Or is that still, like he just said?
I would defer to council on that one.
They're, the village filed a motion to complaint. The, and this is all public records on the docket. The plaintiffs in the case withdrew their initial complaint, but they do have time to re-plead, and they've indicated that they intend to re-plead the complaint.
They do. Thank you. How about the sheriff's investigation status? Anything on that?
I'll defer to this manager on that.
Yes, I, I've actually talked to him a couple times in the last week. They're continuing to talk to employees, and I know there was some documents even this week that they, they've asked us to get, so it's, they didn't give any timetable in terms of completion.
Still ongoing, still contacting and talking everywhere.
They are, yep.
And then, as far as the pay plan, I wasn't there for that meeting, but when we do hire this, a new fire chief or planning director, do we plan on using the, the pay scale that we have set in the village for what the entry positions are supposed to be? Are we, or is that just determined on what you think their value is?
Well, I think for the planning...
Well, there, there's two parts to this question. The first one is, we're not replacing the planning director. That's, that's the first correct issue.
Is it possible, though, that Paula may take that spot full-time, or?
No.
Paula has not indicated an interest or desire.
Smart woman. How about for the fire chief?
She didn't want that either.
How about for, like, the fire chief? Because according to the pay plan, he should start at 114,000. I know we, we stare away from the, the pay plan that we have in place, but...
The position, yeah, both, I mean, the position, the fire chief, community development director, their advertises arrange, and one of the things we'll certainly do when we go out for the advertising is, is give the board documentation in terms of what some of our surrounding communities do. Certainly, if there's documentation that shows the fire chief or any of the positions are way overpaid or even way underpaid, we would consider adjusting it.
Okay. What is the, the, the pay plan for if we don't go, if we don't abide by it? There's steps. Every position that's hired is supposed to start at a certain spot, just like anyone else at any job, and they, they go up in increments. Some people start at the top.
That's rare that people would start at the top.
Right.
That, the, at least my experience with pay plans is that if you have, for instance, the difference between a, an experienced fire chief that comes to your village is going to probably be mid-range, probably not at the top of the range, but probably in the middle of the range. That's usually what you try to, try to do.
Okay.
Midpoint is, I think, the term HR uses.
All right, thanks.
Sure. Yes, sir.
At the last village board meeting, there are a lot of great suggestions, and I was just hoping to get a status check, an update on the progress of these suggestions. Regarding the suggestions on accepting assistance on the Lane Bryant case, what's the status of that?
I'll defer...
The free assistance?
Defer to the chief.
Short cord here.
You know, I believe the discussion was what happened in 2013, and, you know, right now, it's an ongoing investigation. We are always open and looking at different venues on it, and nothing from the discussion of last, last board meeting's been added to it.
Okay, so no real progress on that? Just a little kind of in limbo?
No, we, we deal with ongoing investigation, ongoing tips, ongoing, you know, themes and theories on their cases. We're going on it all the time.
But specifically, there was a suggestion, there were some offers of assistance from other non-village entities that offered to help us out for free, and we had asked about that, and there didn't seem to be any interest in accepting any free offers of assistance, and...
Right. Those back in 2013, there was, there were several offers, actually, that we had, and, and we discussed this case with some, some people, some other entities, and including the FBI and several other pieces, we did not take that, that free offer. That's not to say that we're not going to look at, at offers in the future.
Are there any plans to formally consider these, or...
You know, it's an ongoing investigation, so I have to be very, very careful about what I say. It's an ongoing homicide investigation, so, like I said, we, we look at all things all the time.
Okay. And I, I think this was maybe perhaps partially addressed, but there was a suggestion at the last village board meeting to try to more effectively benchmark labor costs in the surrounding suburbs for cost containment, and I was just curious where we're at on considering that, benchmarking labor costs more effectively.
I, I believe that that has been budgeted in this year to review wages in general, and to see that we are in fact market-relevant.
We're going to benchmark specific positions, and again, every year we do, in fact, it was in the board pack, that we do benchmark increases that we make compared to other towns. But this, this year, we're going to go one step further and actually benchmark specific pay ranges, kind of what Mike was talking about, of, of what we pay versus comparable communities.
And regarding the suggestion on establishing a cost-saving center of excellence, what's the status on that?
None.
Is there any interest on the part of the village board in reducing costs?
Yes.
Would you please consider establishing a cost-saving center of excellence for the village board?
What we're considering are ways to basically become more efficient and cut costs, and those conversations go on probably every time I talk to the village manager. So there are a number of things under consideration right now, bulk of which are not ready for prime time, but when they are, it's, it's our focus to, to do just that, yes.
I mean, the whole purpose of setting up a center of excellence for whichever subject is to, you know, create a good resource to help along those operations. So I would really like to strongly encourage you to establish a cost-saving center of excellence.
Thank you.
Along the same lines, and this is my last point, it was also suggested that, you know, we should start taking a closer look, a self look, at how the village shares knowledge and manages knowledge. Has there been any progress in that in the last three or four weeks since that point was brought up?
I mean, I'm not sure the specific, but one of the things that our, our departments do all the time is certainly, we're always, when you talk about looking for center of excellence and, and benchmarking, is we do look from police to fire to treasurer's office. What do other towns do? What, a lot of what we do to certainly save cost or make ourselves better is learn what works in other towns. We learn that through training, we learn that through a variety of that, and we're, we're very supportive of that in this community. We've, a lot of what we've done has been based on what we've learned from other communities that have had successes.
I, I think that the ways that that probably gets reflected, and I think it's a cost issue too, are when you try to adopt best practices, that's the term that's usually used in the industry, and those best practices are oftentimes gleaned through accreditation, like our fire prevention bureau, as well as certain other areas that, that we're contemplating, economic development being another. We're looking at, you know, accreditation and public works and other areas, and that facilitates just what you're speaking of.
The, the idea of establishing a better knowledge-sharing mechanism is to save money. You had mentioned, would we be willing to spend $70,000 on a feasibility study? And with that, I mean, I assume that you're looking to go outside of the village to have that done for us, but if you are able to look at a database of all your employees within the village to see who might already be, might have a degree in some of the areas you're looking at, you know, the idea is to leverage the knowledge you have from within your organization before you start spending money unnecessarily outside of the organization. And I get the sense that our village still doesn't really know or appreciate, or even have an interest in seeking out knowledge sets within the village. And I could strongly encourage you to do some research on knowledge sharing and knowledge management best practices, and let's get up to speed on this. I think it'll save the village a lot of money. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Good night, gentlemen. Just a really quick question, Mr. Seaman, if you could. I've gone through the, the city ordinances, read through many times, about the approval process for the liquor licensing and the gaming licensing, and if you could, I think for everybody else here, I think it would be helpful if you just give a quick 30-second explanation of how this whole process actually takes place, because I believe everything flows through you for both of those, correct? For approvals for that piece? For paperwork?
I'll defer to council to describe the state statute on liquor license.
Sure. So in every village or city in Illinois, the mayor, but mayor, village president by position is the local liquor commissioner. The local liquor commissioner has enumerated powers in the, both state statute and oftentimes your local village code. Some of those powers, dull-out discipline after due notice, things like that. So they, so yes, by position, the mayor, and your mayor is no different, he is the local liquor commissioner. However, when a liquor license application comes in, there has to be a, an available license, and state law is very clear on that, that it is the board who sets the number of licenses. So, and again, I believe, subject to a couple where you might have had some people leave town and you have some extras, I believe your licenses are always capped. It's a, it's a tool that a lot of towns use, and a good tool, in my opinion, to give board oversight of everyone who comes in, and you can, the board has plenary, plenary authority to either vote to increase or not increase. So that's that. As far as video gaming, once, the way the state law reads, once a, once somebody has a retail liquor license, they have the ability to pour and serve in their establishment, they then, it's out of our hands and they can go down to the state. The state will then, they, they have their own set of rules, they do an investigation, same type of things that you'd see in a local liquor ordinance to see if they'd qualify for a state license. Per the village code, are, we also have a local video gaming license, so after that point, local liquor license, state license, you get those, you come back, you get a local video gaming license.
Does someone get the board local license for the game license?
No.
But one of the things that we'll be discussing Tuesday is the, the allocation of those licenses specifically, such that's, for instance, you have a Class A, which is basically a full-service bar. You'll have a A-V or whatever it is, which would be a full-service bar with video gaming. Class A, you just get a full bar. Class AV, you've got the capacity to...
Just get your spell.
Correct.
And I just, the, the video gaming license, you know, the equivalent would be a business license. Not every business license comes before this board to be voted on, so that's kind of the idea of the video gaming license.
So there's no stopgap? So if the business were to get liquor license, there's nothing to prevent them from? It's going straight to the state to get their license? Is there any way to stop that?
That's what the discussion is going to occur next Tuesday.
Thank you for clarifying.
My pleasure. Yes, sir.
Good evening, gentlemen. Uh, I got a quick question. You know, tonight, we talked a lot about, you know, the economy and, especially with money, and my quick question is, and it's, it's, I've had this question for a while. Trustee Grady, when we, when the town went to look for another contractor, we went with the current contractor right now. Now, from what it states is that this contract was worth an estimated $3.7 million. Now, Tinley Park gets whatever is made within the year, gets a percentage of that money. Now, we got back 168,000. I don't understand, we have a fire department that's got 121 potential right now active members, why doesn't our town, when we have 57,000 people that live in one of the biggest towns on the southwest side of Chicago, why is it that we still cannot come up with an adequate idea of how to take this money that is estimated to what this contract's worth and make this money for the town, and not have to sit there and give it away, and only get a small percentage back? I, I don't understand that one bit. I was wondering if you care to comment on that.
Oh, that makes two of us. I don't understand what you just said. We got 168,000 dollars, we haven't given it any other way.
Okay, our contract is...
What we did is, we set up a specified area that that money's going to be earmarked for anything for the fire department expansion.
Right.
Okay? So what are you asking?
Okay, our con, the contract on our EMS.
Yes.
It states it's worth an estimated $3.7 million. Is that not true?
It might very well. I, I don't know, I wasn't...
Well, because that's, it's posted all over, it's posted that that's what the contract's worth. What I'm asking is, why do we outsource it to private, private companies? Why don't we do it in town?
Way cheaper. We outsource it because it's way cheaper. It saves a lot of money for our residents. Lot of money.
Orland Park has the same amount of residents as Tinley Park, basically. You know what their fire district budget is?
Well, their protection district, it's a big difference.
But they're providing fire and EMS, right?
Right.
That's basically what you're talking about?
Right.
What's their budget?
I don't know. I don't live in Orland Park. I live in Tinley.
I think it's like plus 25 million. So you're talking about...
Take a look at your fire service and your EMS service in Tinley, and see how much better deal you get here than anywhere else. It's a phenomenal system.
Now, are you saying that, like, how, how do you, how do you know that's true? Like, how do you know that our service is better than, say, Orland's, or say, Frankfort's or Mokena's or...
I'm not saying it's better, I'm saying it's much more cost-efficient to our residents, the same service.
Okay. Um, I've talked to some people in town, and what I'm hearing, and like I said, I, I don't know, but I've, I was there and I did see it firsthand. Now, we have a part-time department, estimated...
Paid-on-call department. It's not a part-time department.
It's a part-time department.
No, it is not.
The guys, the guys get paid hourly.
You want full-time paramedics because you want to be one.
No.
That's not the direction this village has gone.
Trust me, I'm already one, so I don't, I'm not looking, I'm just asking because I live in town.
You were the one that was here complaining a, a couple of months back that you got fired, and thought it was unfair. I get that.
Okay. Well, anyway, um, my question is, is that, from what I've heard, that the departments had kind of a hard time filling in spots. Now, I know for a fact, since you like to bring up that I did work in town, you shut down a fire department one, one day because you didn't have adequate staffing. So when you did that, what you did was, you took the people that showed up and dispersed them throughout the other three stations. Well, all you had was EMS coming onto that station. So if there was a fire, you're talking about delayed response. Because why? Because then, the next closest station, say, in that district, was, like, maybe a mile and a half, two miles away. So if there was a fire anywhere between, and this is, I'm talking about Station 2's district, meaning anywhere from 159 to 175th. So when you closed that firehouse, all you had was EMS. You had no fire, no fire engine available. Now, if we have 121 part-time members, what I don't understand is, what's the problem?
There was one incident, it's been addressed, and we're guaranteed it won't happen again.
Let's see. What, my question, I have one more question, and that would be, has anybody ever looked into what the cost would be, like how trustee Vandenberg stated? Has anyone ever looked into what the cost would be if we went to a full-time union career department compared to what we have now?
Lots.
Yes, many times we've looked at it. It's extremely more expensive than what we're paying now.
Now, what do we pay out of our taxes towards the fire EMS and police? I'm just curious, if anybody knows offhand.
What do we what?
What do we pay out of our taxes towards the fire EMS and police? Yeah, what's the...
What's the budget for fire?
No, not the budget, but what do we pay? Do you know the percentage of our taxes that go towards public service?
How mu, how much of the village budget, what's the percentage that goes to fire protection?
Yes.
Brad, you got a ballpark idea on that?
I don't have enough, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm not sure I understand what the point of the question is. We don't, I don't have the exact percentage, but you can look at the budget, I mean, we can all pull that up. It's, you get a great bargain here for your fire service, in terms of, in terms of the protection and the dedication of your people, and the cost effectiveness to the village.
I, and I underst, I understand it to...
Property damage recovery, life...
I understand that to a certain degree, okay? But what I'm, what I'm asking is, is this, and like I stated before, you know, even the chief's position we talked about, June 30th, the day goes up. Now, is that because you have to wait until June 30th to actively start looking for people? Or have you been able to look from the point that you knew that Chief Thelma was going to retire?
There's a process that's being put in place to recruit the chief that will be discussed by the committee of the hall at the next meeting.
At the next meeting?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Just really quick, I know I emailed you, Jake, and I know you've been very, very busy about the, we were talking about the sportsplex, and the last time I talked about it, you guys challenged me to find a different way to do this, and I have.
Yep. I shared it, I shared it with staff, and actually, we had a conversation about it this evening. That was one of the articles, the different financing.
Conduit financing through nonprofit and, literally, the village only puts out for infrastructure. They do private donations as the collateral for the bonds. It's issued through the village, but the bond is, the bonds are not repayable by the village or citizens, it's payable by the nonprofit. It's a very unique way to do it. It's being done now in La Vista, Nebraska. Hopefully, we can set something up. I've reached out to the project manager of the project. She has come back to me and said she would very much like to at least do a conference call, and then hopefully a presentation. And I know studies would have to be done, I understand that, but this is a really different way to finance a sportsplex without the village being on the hook for the money, for the payment.
I think this village is more than receptive to any vehicle to do a project of that nature that does not commit and does not put the village citizens on the hook for paying.
Yeah, it definitely does not. I spoke with her for a long period of time, and she really would like to make this presentation. She, um, the one she's, the one she's doing right now is very impressive.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Yes, just real quick, when, you said the, mentioned the cost-cutting. I, I ask you again, would you please go into your meeting to, to really look into the necessity of so many company vehicles that are, that individuals drive around? I, I think it's extremely high if you do a total of the numbers of people. That many people do not need to be taking vehicles home and using for personal use. You're only driving within the village, the people live within the village. Thank you. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Just one last quick comment.
Sure.
Trustee Mar, I just got one thing to say. You know, in all those towns that you talk about and that how we save so much money by doing the way we do it, the one thing that all the other towns don't have is over a 200% turnover, meaning they don't have people coming in, leaving, coming out, and making $11 an hour, less than people make at wages at McDonald's. And I know that for a fact because I did it. So then, so any time that I know you try to, you know, sit there and try to over-talk me and, and try to intimidate me, it doesn't work, and it's not working in this town, it hasn't worked in this town. We've been dealing with this, it's always pub, publicized. It was all over the newspaper when this contract changed from, from the last contractor to this contractor. It was nothing but, oh, we're saving money and we're doing this, we're doing that, but at, the truth of the matter is, we're not. And the truth of the matter is, we have people on the department currently that are more than capable in doing the job, both, fire and EMS like every other town, but yet, we, you know, we're saving more money by having a contractor.
Thanks for your opinion.
Well, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Last thing, last question. Can we move the meetings back to the village hall?
I defer to the clerk.
Ask storytime.
We'll see you at the village hall next time, okay?
We would love to, and...
This is closer to my house.
And right now, we're doing, we're approaching about 35% of our standing committees back there. I've just approved putting a committee of the hall, and what was the last one, Laura, that we discussed this morning?
Um, we talked about the bill, committee of the hall and one of the board meetings in July, we talked about.
Yes, and...
Seems like things are slowing down.
Well, but I was...
You guys have access, you have access to more information back there?
You know, seriously...
We really want to, so we take that seriously.
One of the issues is, when we do attempt to move it back, there are rallying cry goes out on social media to pack the house.
That's really not what happens. It's usually if something gets upset and we...
Am I wrong? I've read your things, Mike, I've read them. You, you know, when we wanted to move back to the village hall, there was a social media call to pack the house. Shut it down.
We, we would all like it to be back at the village hall. Yes, ma'am?
We would all like not to have to attend these meetings, but as soon as we will, as soon as we're comfortable that our, as soon as you get my taxes to a place that they should be, I promise I won't come anymore. Here's my question...
What we're responsible is 10% to 12% of your taxes.
Pardon?
We're responsible for 10 to 12% of those taxes. We don't control the school districts that are responsible for 76 or 7% of your taxes.
You don't seem to.
I'm sorry. I feel like I'm at a, at a grammar school event or something. This is, in my work, I don't see any of this silliness going on, but your feasibility, you said you looked into the, what was just talked about with the EMTs and your, what we do here in the village. And because I had, had an incident in my house very recently where somebody did come in, and I wasn't impressed. Have you seen, can we get ahold of the study you've done that compares the cost benefit of outsourcing to having our own? You said that that was done already? Can I, how do I get a copy of that?
We've looked at that. The staff has done some research on it in the past when the ambulance contracts have come up for renewal or for bid.
Can I get a copy of that study that was done?
Ma'am, give your email address, give your email address to staff. I'll provide them with all the information they need to send to you.
Okay, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Well, I was perfectly content to just let this die out, but since I was personally called out by you, Mr. Mar, the reason that we had to go and pack the place is because nothing would have got done in regards to Buckeye if we did it, okay? Now, you know, okay, we're getting to the point now, and you had a lot of people come out for the Tiff, and I'm glad it was here because there was a lot of people, all right? But I'm yielding now, all right, we're at the point where there's no, now I would say this, I would say this, for the appointments, I would say one more here. I would say the appointments might be a big deal. I don't know. I'll, I'll pull them. But I'll say after that, you know, we can probably survive at the village hall, all right? Now, my big thing is, is nothing against Andrew High School. It's a beautiful high school. I love it. It's great. I'm an Eastsider. It's on the West Side, it's a little bit further for me. For me personally, I literally can't update anything on what's going on here. There is, I mean, we are in a concrete bunker down here. There is one bar of signal, okay? Now, think about the Wi-Fi password. We can have the meetings here till the end of time, but I'd rather take my chances at village hall than here, because seriously, it's like I'm almost in withdrawal from like not being on with any signal, all right? So that's my whole thing. But you know what? I will never, ever apologize for calling out to come to the meeting, because you know what? If 400 people don't show up on those cold February nights, they're building that project there on 183rd and Oak Park Avenue, and that's a fact.
Yes, sir.
You know, Mr. Mar, your aggression towards the people today is absurd.
What do you call that? Why do we have to take that?
TJ, he, I, I agree with you. Hold on. I agree with you, but he's only responding to that. Everyone has been very diplomatic the last couple of months, and everyone's been great on both sides of the aisle. This lady comes up here, you're slamming down the mic, you're getting, you're getting pissed at her. This is ridiculous. You want to start throwing mud? We'll throw mud. We'll talk about your emails back where you called the Jewish people hymns. You want to start bringing that up too? You talk about the social media. We won't talk about the synagogues like you do. Act respectable like everyone else has been.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, at this time, I would like to have a motion.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Have a good evening.